It's probably important to say something right now, we're hoping that two people can rejoin our meeting. We need one of the board member to make this meeting a quorum and official.
All right.
Technical difficulty. Please bear with us.
So it's recording now. I mean, it's, it's public now.
Thank you for everyone's patience as we move over from.
Can Kathy call in? Is she able to call in?
Zoom.
I just, if she has the phone number, she should be able to call in.
Maybe the best.
So Tracy, you still, am I not good? Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you now.
You can hear me now? Okay. See, I get as close as I can to this.
Here's Kathy. Where'd she go? All right, there she is.
Yeah, I would get Kathy and Lloyd to just call in because it'll help.
Kathy's here.
Adam, with the quorum now, can we start again? You're muted, Adam. You're muted, Adam.
Mute. Kate, we should begin again. Maybe I should make an explanation to the public. We set our meeting up through one virtual meeting, thinking that we had links to everybody. And so we're going ahead and continuing with the meeting, but there's a question of where we should start. And Kate, what's your suggestion as board chair? Should we go over what Amy had been proposing? I can't hear you. You have to unmute on your screen, yeah.
I think that's a fair, I think we should have Amy at least begin the call to order and the, the other items were, you know, I think that's pretty normal. But do we need a motion to restart the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, on favor to restart the meeting at 8:07. On favor, aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so Amy, I think it would make sense to redo your open. I think it's fair, it was a great, a great open for our reopen plan. And I think if you want to just give a brief, brief introduction, it would help all the viewers that haven't had the opportunity to hear this start. I'm sure people are anxious and excited. And I really appreciate everybody that has, has taken their time out of their night to listen in. And especially the part that we will be giving this many, many iterations for people to give their updates and suggestions along the way. And that this is very much a draft plan that we're working on. So, who would you start?
So thank you. Let's get our first run with our trial run. So this will be our actual now proposal of the plan. So I'm glad I got to talk a little bit before about it and think about what I wanted to say. So welcome to everybody again here that has joined us. We, as the reopening committee, our Board of Education, we are excited to be back live now. So sorry for the technical difficulties, but we're happy to be on Zoom and talk about our plan and what Governor Lamont and Commissioner Cardona have asked us to do in reopening our school for the fall. So we were tasked about a month ago to put together a plan that had three possible scenarios. And each of those scenarios is a little bit different. And I'm going to talk about each of those things for you. Because I'm on my daughter's Chromebook right now, I'm not logged into my drive, but I will make the presentation I have available. So that way then you can access this on our school website. Our plan will be on our school website. We will also have our form that will indicate to us if you will be in person, remote learning, or you have other plans for your children this fall, that will be there also. You will also receive an informational guide. And in that informational guide will give you the breakdown of what our school day will look like, what our arrival dismissal, what it will look like in our lunch recess, those types of things that we, the nitty gritty of it that we will all have questions about. And how will we handle that? And what will that look like? And that will be in that informational guide. So there's multiple pieces that you will receive for School Messenger tomorrow morning and posted on our website and through our Facebook page. So please make sure that you check all of those places to be able to access what we are putting out there for Volantown. So as far as our reopening goes, we had a large committee made up of all of our departments within our school. We had our transportation to maintenance to cafeteria. We had parent representative. We had our CSEA and VEA representatives also. And they, we all, I think there's about 15 of us, had a part in making sure each section of this plan was something that we could do in Volantown and have to be able to go to the community and put forward to the state, who ultimately will let us know if our plan is feasible and we're able to move forward with the plan that, that we have. So the purpose of our plan is to make sure that we have a full, safe, and appropriate reopening. And by a full reopening, that refers to having our students back and our staff back and making it a safe place for all of them to return to. So safe physically, taking the precautions that we need necessary for children to come back into our building and staff to come back into our building. And any modifications that need to happen to help that or through remote learning and how that is going to look also. A full reopening refers to having everybody come back with us in some shape or form. And then the last is, an appropriate reopening refers to academic achievement and working through what our students may need to catch up on from the spring and then translating into now the next three trimesters of their education. We had four priorities in our plan, and that was the safety of our students and staff. And again, that is the paramount of us coming back is making sure that they are safe upon return to school and that we have those procedures in place and that we have the items that we need in place in order to get them back. The development of educational opportunities and being able to manipulate our schedule and resources in order to provide the most educational contact time for our students who are in person and being able to support our students who are remote as well. And with that being said, the awareness of social emotional needs of our students and staff coming back. So on both ends, there will be some emotional needs that will need to be worked with and dealt with. And then the achievement of our students by the end of this school year in bringing them and helping them regain what they have missed in almost seven months of not being in an educational setting. The state of Connecticut put out guidelines, and those guidelines were under the guise of the ADAPT, Advanced Achieved Connecticut's Plan to Learn and Grow. And through that plan, Governor Lamont and Commissioner Cardona set out, in their team, set out expectations of what the plan will look like and how schools will be addressing that in each of their unique needs. And if you live in Volantown, you know that Volantown is so different than a lot of the other districts that are out there, especially in the west side of the state. And we have a unique opportunity where our in-person learning can really be small. And we have that opportunity. And that is one of those things where we want to maximize that and be able to, if we can, bring students back, hopefully be able to do that. In the state's model, they've emphasized cohorting, which we will do. As you know, we are, most grade levels, except for one, are two classrooms. And so those classrooms will be grouped in cohorts. They will remain with the same teacher. And unless they're in the middle school, well, they'll rotate one or two other teachers. But for the majority, they are in their same cohort. And we will maximize our paraprofessionals where they will be in limited classrooms, though they may need to change classrooms. It'll be the same classroom cohorts as we move on. One of the other pieces for, in the state plan was social distancing and making sure that face coverings were required. Transportation, so working out transportation for all students and working throughout the facility. So those are some of the pieces in the state plan that were really emphasized for districts to look at and which we have done in our plan through a series of checklist. One of the pieces of our plan in the beginning, it talks about student and staff expectation. So knowing that students should stay home if they're feeling ill. We will ask that parents and staff screen their own children and then screen themselves for COVID symptoms. Face coverings and masks are required. Social distancing is required, frequent hand washing and sanitizing. And we talked a little bit before this in our other meeting about how we will continue with those habits. So getting in the habits of good hand washing, 20 seconds, getting in the habit of entering and exiting a classroom and sanitizing your hands and making sure that we are doing those things to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. So in our plan, there are three models. And in those three models, one of the first models, in person. So our hope is that a full reopening is an opening where our students can come back for those families that are selecting for them to come back.
Amy, I think we lost you.
Amy, we lost your sound.
Sure, on remote track. So let me talk about that for a minute for the folks who are listening. So in person, you are coming back into our building and you are joining your cohort and you are participating in classroom life. The second part of that is parents can choose remote learning. So parents can choose the remote learning track. And what that means is for parents out there who may be a little uneasy about coming back, they may wish that their child stay home for a few extra weeks, they can participate in our remote learning track. And what that will be is we, VES will provide plans for those parents to support their child with the expectations that are happening within VES in their child's classroom. There will be, we are still working on those details of how our teachers will support that. And it will look different than spring, but we are hoping that through our scheduling efforts that we will be able to help schedule some time for our teachers to be connected to our kids and who are on the remote learning track. Full distance learning is when we have been told that we cannot come back to our building. So if there is a community spread of COVID-19, if there are certain indicators within our building that we should close, that'll be the time when we all move to distance learning. And we will be distance learning, we will be distance learning until we're cleared to then reopen our building again with a lot of those same procedures. There is always a question about homeschooling. So sometimes when kids are, when families want to homeschool, it's different than the remote learning track that we are providing at VES. So those who would like to homeschool their child and separate from what Volantown Elementary would be doing, that's different than being part of our remote learning track. If you are choosing to homeschool, you as a parent are looking to provide your own curriculum to your child or your children. Sometimes parents who homeschool have met other homeschooling parents and they do a co-op, but that's different than being part of a remote learning track and homeschooling. If there are parents out there that have questions about homeschooling, you can check the state website. There's a homeschooling page and a homeschooling section that gives you information on that. So in addition to our in-person learning and our remote track learning, the state has also provided through the Connecticut State Learning Hub, remote access for parents and families to be able to go on and find opportunities to help them and their children learn at home. So that's accessible anytime to anyone. They are constantly updating it. So that's just something for those who are listening. You can always visit that website. And there's information there for you regarding that. Our, as we move into what in-person learning, what in-person learning will look like, I think that's really the question that people have, what will it look like when we come back to the building? So the informational guide that you will receive will have that information in it. Our arrival and dismissal will change. We will have to do some different things than we are normally accustomed to. So this is the difference that we are accustomed to going to our early childhood door and receiving our students there and gathering with other families and seeing other friends and being able to be outside. And that, that's going to look different than as we come into this year. So we will develop more of a car rider line. And that'll all be discussed as we move forward with our plans to return in person. Some of the things in our building that we are doing, we do have social distancing markers that will be up and down our hallway. They are spread six feet apart. So that way then when staff and students are walking in and out of our building, we will be able to know where our social distancing markers are. We will have, or do have sanitizing stations for classrooms. We have them at our entrances and exits. We also are changing part of how our visitors come to our building. So typically, as many of you know, our visitors are able to come in, they come into our office. And not that we don't want to see anybody, but taking the precautions that we need to. We will be using our window that's next to our main door now to be able to sign students in and sign students out. So we'll be utilizing that window and then having students come in and our office staff being able to walk them up and down if needed, especially our little learners. They get lost from the front of the building to the back of the building. So they will be helped and escorted up and down to their places. So those are just some of the things that we have been working on and been doing in our classroom to really prepare for in-person learning and coming back. My hope is that we can come back and be able to do a lot of these safety measures and be able to be in school for quite some time, hopefully as long as possible, and be able to have our kids back in learning, whether it's in person or whether it's remote track or whether you're homeschooling. You know, we in Volantown want to support, you know, the students of our community. So it doesn't matter which track you choose. You choose the one that's best, you know, for your family. And I'm hoping that by some point in time, we can get back to normal. I should talk a little bit about, I think our students are going to want the old normal. And that is normal. They, they think they're going to come back to the old normal. And for now, it's not going to look like the old normal. It's going to be, our desks will be six feet apart as much as we can, if not further. They will not have those fun and safe things that usually are in our classrooms. But we will have those pieces hopefully eventually. And hopefully eventually we can get back to that normal. But for now, it will look different. And we just need to prepare our kids for that. I think that they want to come back, but I think they long for yesterday and what, what once was. And, and we just have to help them transition to this is just for now. And hopefully soon, it will be back to normal. So again, to all the families out there listening, staff members, I know there's so many of you out there. I'm just, I will check my email while we're on here, just so that way then if anybody had any questions, I'll answer. Just know that all this information will come to you and it is a fluid document. You will have an opportunity for feedback. There will also be a Google form for feedback on our website. So please read through the document, send me your feedback, your questions. If there are editing marks that you think, I do not take offense to that, please send them to me. We want to make sure it's as good as we can put out there and that it's the best that we can do in Volantown. So again, you'll get all this information tomorrow morning. And I hope that once you read through it, process it. There's no rush to fill out the form to choose. I want families to take time to really think about what your preferences of the family versus your child returning in person or for your child going the remote track. And by doing that, I should say, it's not set in stone. That doesn't mean you can't change your mind. So please know that it's okay to select a remote track if you need that. It's okay to select in person if you need that. Okay? All right, I think that's it. For me for right now, I'm sure I feel a lot more questions.
I have some questions, Amy. Thank you for putting all of this together, you and everybody that worked on the, on the real link committee. My first question is, I know you said that masks will be required, but it looks like there might be some opportunity if students are able to socially distance. I'm thinking socially distancing in the classroom with their desks six feet apart. At that point, will they be able to remove their mask?
They will be allowed to have masks.
Hear me?
Yeah, are you still there, Megan? So, yeah, they will be able to have mask breaks, you know, throughout the day at the teacher's discretion and for when they feel. We are going to encourage a lot of outside time. We will set up certain zones so they can go outside. And if they are far enough apart outside as well, they can take their masks off. I do think we need more guidance from Governor Lamont and Commissioner Cardona on that specifically. It's unclear in their plan if that's okay to do on a consistent basis. There are some states, as many of you know, and those of you who are listening, as you know, I live in Rhode Island. So it's very different for me. My children are not going to be required to wear masks. So it's, it's very different on how states in that are handling it. So I think that when we go back and look at it, that is one of the main questions we have. If kids are far enough apart, can they learn without their masks on? So I think we need more information from, or directive really on if that's okay.
Okay. Do you expect to have that answered by the beginning of school? Or are you just planning on, you know, going in and they'll have to be wearing it during their instruction? And then if we, you know, if you hear otherwise, then at that point, you'll allow them to remove it if you get that instruction?
Yeah. And I think anytime that we get a change, like that's a big change. So I think that, you know, if we can, if that's a change that comes through and we can do it and implement it, then definitely. And but I think for some families that, that might change their minds if they're in person or remote. So I think that, you know, we should give families the opportunity to be able to change their mind if they're not really comfortable with that just yet. But I'm hoping that we can get clarity. And even if it's a couple of days before, we can always adjust as needed.
Okay. The other question I was just looking for a little bit clarification on was the temperature checks. So can you just confirm, it looks like how it's set up here, parents will do it at home and then it will only be done at school if there's some sort of suspicion that maybe a student is not well. Is that correct? Or will students have to have a thermometer check at the time of the entrance to school?
So we are going to do an active screening when, for anybody listening, when you read through the plan, it's probably about halfway down and there's a passage called active screening. So we are going to do an active screening for the first few weeks of school, which includes a touchless thermometer check, whether they're coming off the bus or whether they're in the car rider line. So it'll be, you know, a quick, one, two seconds. We have about 12 touchless thermometers. And we, our plan is to do that for the first few weeks to screen as kids are coming back and coming in the building.
And for the students that are unable due to a health condition to wear a mask, are you requiring physicians sign off on that? Or will that be on the honor system?
We do not have exact guidance from the state regarding that. It is that they are required to wear a mask unless they have a medical condition. So we are going to wait and see what else the state, if the state will ask parents to provide medical documentation, that we don't know yet. So as far as right now, if there is a medical condition and they cannot wear a mask, then they are permitted not to. And we will just make arrangements in our classroom where we strategically place that student and, you know, be able to still partake in in-person, but still keeping everybody else also safe who is in, are in the classroom.
Okay, good. And the one, the one area feedback that I wanted to review, and you know, maybe you guys have discussed this, but I feel like in this plan, there was a little bit of, it doesn't allow for a lot of transparency to the school when students and/or their families or faculty are traveling to an area that is one of these kind of hotspots. Sorry, it says my internet connection is unstable. So if for some reason you can't hear me, let me know. But is the school anticipating doing anything sort of like when, you know, I know you guys sent home a big packet that, for the handbook that they have to sign off. Is there an expectation that when some students or their families have to travel, that the school will be notified? Same with people coming in for IEPs, visitors with deliveries, will you be having them sign off or ask them to dispose if they've been to one of those hotspots in the last two weeks? I know we have the executive order, but sometimes, you know, in the day-to-day shuffle, people don't necessarily know kind of the restrictions and the guidance. So it, I didn't think that this plan really covered what the school plans to do in regards to that quarantine and traveling in some of those areas.
That's a great question. So it made me think about our no visitor policy. So in part of the plan, there is a statement in there that at this time, we will have no visitors. All visitors will be at our front window. And if for some reason, oh, so that includes all deliveries, that includes they will not be coming in. If there is a reason for an in-person meeting, we will have to have that person, we will ask that anybody who comes in does their own cell screen at home before coming down to our building. And in our plan, it wasn't addressed as far as quarantining. If, if you go out of state and then you come back, it wasn't addressed as, I, I think it was more on the honor system. So that's a great point. And maybe we should need to review that with our committee. So that is something that we should, you know, look into. And I would hope that, you know, if somebody is traveling, that they're, can send somebody else to come. They need to pick up something, et cetera, just so that we can keep everybody safe. But I do think there may be a set of questions that our secretaries ask upon, and, you know, entry, if someone needs to come in, they're going to need to kind of ask, you know, have you been traveling? Have you, you know, done those things? Like just like when you go to the doctor's office and they ask you the same, those same types of questions. We want to make sure that anybody that comes in isn't a risk for our kids and our staff. We'll talk, that's a good point, Megan. We'll talk about that at our next committee meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was thinking in the self-screening, in the self-screening that we're requiring every family member to go through. It's not just a temperature check. There'll be a checklist that'll be also, you know, an item of questions to ask yourself. You know, reminder, maybe every day, did you go to a hotspot, you know, in the last?
Yeah. And I mean, even, you know, they, they issued, I think, another executive order today or in the last day. I know it's constantly changing based on how other states are dealing with their numbers. So it could just be that somebody's not even aware that, well, last week I was here and it was, you know, now the COVID spike, you know, maybe I should call office and see if I should keep my student home for two weeks or something. It's kind of an ongoing conversation, I think, with you guys, just encouraging that transparency.
And I think that, you know, I would encourage too, for any families, if you are, you know, my thought would be if you are going away and you are traveling, we have our remote learning track. So we always feel compelled to send our kids to school and we want them to be in school and if you chose an in-person. But we have that remote learning track for this reason. So if grandma comes to visit from a state that maybe is under quarantine and as a parent, knowing that you can choose a remote learning track if you need to for that two-week period, maybe that grandma's there, that would be okay too. So we really want to be flexible so that way we can keep our students and staff safe. So if kids need to stay home, they can stay home. There's no perfect attendance this year. It's not going to happen. We want kids to be safe and we want, you know, them to feel well and we want their families to, too. So I think that's very valid to to ask families to be honest and transparent with us and just be able to let us know and we can easily set them up to be online learning. Anybody else have any other questions that stick out in this plan?
I think it's just important to make a note, I know Adam's going to say something too, but this plan that we're referring to, the reopening Volantown Elementary School formal document that we're reviewing and required to send to the state due tomorrow is very formulaic. It's a very formulaic plan based on the questions that we had, just like on RFP, you have to answer the questions and such. Amy is also referring to a kind of a Q and A information document that she's putting forth for the school community and families and parents to kind of better understand some of the nitty gritty. So just wanted to remind everybody that that's, there's kind of two, two documents going into forms that we're going to work with to provide as much data as possible. But the reopening plan is just something that's mandated that we're working towards to submit and review. But I totally, you know, I've been reading it for so many weeks now. It's, it's got a lot of repetition in it, a lot of details, but it definitely doesn't cover the spectrum of the nitty gritty that we're looking at, parents and certainly what Amy, the whole staff is working on to help us learn better as we go.
And I think to that point, Kate, if anyone, you know, on the Board of Ed or the committee, if we've forgotten something in that informational guide that just seems so benign to us. For example, water fountains, I don't think I put that in there, but that needs to be put in there. There will not be water fountain use. I would encourage, if you are sending your child in person, send them a water bottle. I will make sure that we have backup water for them. I will, you know, our staff will pour it, I'll pour it, anybody who runs out. We will make sure that we have that because we don't want them drinking out of water fountains. But those are the things, those are the nitty gritty things that I would just ask. If you think of it and it's not in that plan, please let me know, either through the Google form or through Gmail. So that way then it can be so we all know what's going on and what's happening in there.
Question, you had said they will eat in the classrooms. Are we having hot lunch?
So one of the pieces to, as Tom O'Connor has explained to us, was we put our food commodities in in January. So this is pre-pandemic when we order certain types of food in anticipation for what's coming up. So we have food that will be just like our normal hot lunch. So I envision that we are having students select if they want, let's say it's green beans and and they pick, you know, other two vegetables that they would like, be able to admit that in the morning to us. And then we're just able to bring that down to them when lunchtime happens. And so we're kind of, you know, we are small enough where we can deliver lunch. I'm not opposed to delivering lunch myself. So I'm, you know, I'm pretty sure we can still continue with our hot lunch program. Anybody else?
I have a few more questions, but I'm going to go on to that document that you talked about later on.
Are you sure? You don't want to ask? Okay. Are you sure you don't want to ask?
No, well, I was being probably selfish on my part. I have a daughter that's going in and I know they don't have, the masks get very hot and kids can get overheated. And I'm wondering for those classrooms that don't have good air circulation, they get really hot in the end of the year and the beginning of the year, has any kind of air conditioning systems been put in place? I know it's some classroom.
So our five through eight, Adam will probably answer this, our five through eight is fully air conditioned. And then all of our lower school is air conditioned, including, if Mr. Duncan's listening, including Mr. Duncan, because he was one of the last, the last men standing there. So he is also, so we are, and then we have, do have a few classrooms who are not, but we do have our hand handlers. Adam can talk a little bit about that, our air handler system, to be able to open that. But the kids should find comfort that there is, thankfully, it's hot, so air conditioning.
Yeah. And teachers too, it gets hot with that. Yeah, they'll be, you know, absolutely. Thank you.
In terms of the preschool, I believe it's going to be a smaller preschool. I think we talked about at one of the previous meetings that the state was being flexible on the reimbursement of that. Will the preschool program only be offered to Volantown residents at this time?
So our preschool program, we are going to move through some changes to our preschool program. We have been waiting since beginning to receive some information from the Office of Early Childhood. I was told Monday, but now it's Thursday, so I'm still waiting for some information to help guide us in our school readiness program. So for those of you that are listening, our Volantown School Readiness Program is, works in conjunction with the Volantown Board of Ed. So it is a program that's housed within Volantown Elementary School and has its own separate governing board, its own liaison, which is myself, its own chair. And it operates separately, but under the umbrella of Volantown because it's in a Volantown building. So what will happen with preschool and what I envision is unfortunately, at this point in time, for those of you that are listening, we are not going to be able to provide preschool transportation this year. And so this is in the document. I am in the midst of creating a preschool document to go out to families so that they can make the right decision for themselves regarding preschool. We are looking at.
Amy, we lost you.
And we are looking at, so it will be different for preschool because you have to clean. What they want you to do is follow the daycare model right now for preschool. And you have to clean for that cohort and they have to stay in that cohort. So for us to be able to do that, it might, it's not going to work having an afternoon preschool program at this point. So we will be looking at some different days and some different hour options for them. But we are waiting on the Office of Early Childhood to give us information for our school readiness program. And so once that comes out, I'll be able to share that with our families. And going back to what you said, Megan, there is a formula for having our, a lot of 44 students. And then there's a formula for if we don't have that many in regards to then who's remote learning for their preschool and who's in-person for preschool. So there is, though they said it's not going to count, there's a little bit of difference in what that looks like as far as the grant money that we take in. So we have to review that, Adam and I, when we get the information from our school readiness program in regards to residents and non-residents.
And for the students that typically will go out of the classroom, either your older students that have multiple teachers or even for like art and music and things like that, is the intention that those teachers will go into your court, so to speak? Will art teacher go to each of the classrooms as opposed to the students going to the art room?
Yes. Yeah. So Megan, you have such good questions because these are all things that I like should, you know, remember, like, they keep coming back to me. So this is a great question. Our art, art, media, PE is a little bit different. So we'll talk about PE. Music and we'll be rotating with students in grades three through eight. They will be going into blocks. So they will be rotating every 12 to 14 days. So the art teacher will have, let's say, Mr. C's classroom for 12 to 14 days. So she will go into that classroom, she will do art in that classroom, she will bring her supplies into that classroom for them there. They will not come to the art room. So that'll be grades three through eight. Our, there was a big push in the state's plan to have a little bit more social emotional learning. So what we are going to do is our school social worker will be working every other week with classrooms and going through our second step program with all of our classrooms. Our K through two will be still pushed in, but it'll be daily because their schedule operates a little bit differently. So they will have art one day, they will have music one day. PE, our vision for our PE program is that they're going to be outside. So please send your kids in raincoats. Please send them in gear where they can go outside. If it's snowing, we can send snow pants and boots, but we, you know, we want them to do PE outside. Mr. Rassico had some great ideas on what individual, but group games look like when you're social distancing. We have some great resources for that. We're going to teach the kids how to do that. So that way then when they go to recess, they can translate that to then playing at recess. So that's kind of how specials will look. We call it art on a cart. And they'll be, you know, shuffling to classroom to classroom. It's not ideal, but it's the best way to keep that cohort within that cohort. And then so as far as kids who get services from other teachers outside of their classroom, we have worked hard at recognizing what that's going to look like. And can we, how can we manipulate our teachers to keep those cohorts similar or the same? So it is acceptable in the document that proceeds from the state that some kids do need to go out and get different services. So those teachers, before those kids come in, will have sanitized and clean their table. And then when they leave, they will again sanitize and clean. And those kids will sanitize their hands before then going back to their classroom. But we will try to keep it as much as their own cohort from their, from where they're coming from together to going to that teacher, if that makes sense. Okay. Lloyd, thanks for joining. Get finally got on there. Does anybody else have anything else that I could cover, Arica?
Yeah, Amy, thank you for talking about kind of the social emotional learning piece. And I'm glad here the social worker is going in and splitting up her time and spending, you said a week, like in a, in a certain?
So she would be, so there are two possibilities. We could do every day, she could see a class like, for example, seventh grade. She could see seven gliddin' every week. Or she could see it every other week. So we have to look at her case load of kids that she's servicing individually. And then how can we, we have to make a decision based on, can we get her in there every, once a week or every other week? But still have her have availability because there are going to be kids outside of that time who are going to need some support, whether they're on her case load or not, some families that may need some support. But our big push in, you know, for her too, is really get in and be back with the kid and kind of work through that with them.
Okay. All right, good.
Any other, any other questions? Okay.
I have one more. This might be kind of in any degree of your teacher's curriculum. What about the younger students with toys? What's kind of your plan for that? Or even educational toys?
So when, for pre-K, it's about keeping the compartment. So you're talking about like when they get to go and play kitchen and do Legos and those types of things. Is that what you're talking about, Megan?
Yeah. Even when, you know, we hear about how important, you know, that educational play is for these young students. So I know that's obviously going to look, some of those bigger things like the kitchen are just not going to be possible, I would assume. But even like, you know, dating myself here, but when I went to school, we had those little blocks for camping and things like that. I mean, what, what are you guys looking at, at having in the classroom or not having in the classroom?
So our teachers and staff, well, really our teachers will be coming back when they come back in the fall. So they'll need to remove any of that extra seating that they have. And we talked about this in our first meeting, any of those pieces that we know that our kids love and want as part of their classroom, that alternative seating, the rubs, the pillows, all those fun things are going to have to come out at this point for now. But as far as small toys, blocks, indoor recess, so if it's pouring rain, we're not going outside. So what is that going to look like? So students, you know, as we look through the plan, the plan, you know, indicates that anything that's used or touched is sanitized. So if, you know, we may be putting out some small Lego kits that kids can have within classrooms. We have small enough cohorts, we have lots of Legos, we can divvy them up. And then just making sure that we're sanitizing and washing them come the end of the day. So that will take a little bit more legwork on our part. But it is part, you know, especially for preschool, that's just developmentally appropriate, having them have that, having them play kitchen and play postman and do all those things that, you know, are part of a preschool classroom. So preschool is definitely different. And when we look at daycare guidelines, preschools, you know, they are allowed, as long as they're in their same cohort, they are allowed to, you know, interact and play with the same things. But it's all about that sanitizing and cleaning after. As far as the older kids go, it really will be a little bit more individualized. We work out plans with our teachers on the materials that we have and be able to, you know, have things for kids to still do. Because in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, any grade, it, kids still do like to play. And that, you know, and that, I think, for some kids, that's going to be hard. And that, you know, and that, I think, for some kids, that's going to be hard for them when they come back. And that's, you know, what they're longing for right now, you know?
I do think however it is that you think it's going to flow, it'll probably flow differently.
I know. I know. Well, like you said, it's a fluid document. It's a working document. It's constantly changing. And there's going to be things added and amended and deleted and added again. So, it is a long work in progress. But what you have so far is great. And thank you for your hard work, you and the school. And you really did a nice job. I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
We, you know, we really tried to encompass all of the pieces. We have a great model from East Hampton. So, praise to them because, you know, we were really able to see our vision come out. It's hard to take all those pieces and put them in something without, you know, for me, I need to see it first and then be able to do it. So, they had a great model. We were able to model after that. And like you said, Erica, it is fluid and changing. I wouldn't be surprised if I opened my email right now that I would have something that would, that I would have to change. So, I wouldn't be surprised about that. But I, you know, want to thank our families and everyone for being part of this process. We will continue to communicate and give that information out as we can. We had to get our feet down first before we can, before we could really, you know, figure out what, what are we going to do? And, you know, to our families, please bear with us. And as things change, you know, they'll change.
Amy, so you have a really good, like, starting going and things like that. So, when there are changes, when there, when you have to make a change, let's say, how does that get communicated? Like, how do, how does parents and Board of Ed? And how do we know about which change in this document happens? How, what's the process? I'm just...
So, why don't I, so my new changes, you know, if, like I said, I have some really great people out there who are going to tell me that there's spelling, you know, if there's spelling, if it's whatever. My new changes, we won't communicate. But big changes, we will reshare. So, I'll just keep resharing to families. I will put it on Facebook. I will put it through School Messenger and then email. I would like to say to anybody listening, if you are not receiving School Message emails from me, please let me know. So, I go through the School Message receipt. All 330 people. Try to make sure that we haven't missed anybody's email. So, I've done it quite a few times now, but I just want to make sure that you're getting it by phone or by email. And one person in your household should be listed so you're able to get it. So, just make sure that, that somebody in your household is getting the email that I'm sending out. I just want to make sure about that.
And Amy, just for, just the expectations for the parents. So, we will have this document posted tomorrow, both documents.
Let me, let me go over just a few things that are happening. And people missed the introduction. And I just want to go back and just take people through a bit of a sequence because the state published a template at the beginning of July. And the initial document, I think I spent a whole weekend just writing everything that I could to answer each one of the questions. And we formed our committee and then sent that into the committee. And we worked to have that document ready for the regular Board of Ed meeting at the beginning of the month. And right after the Board of Ed meeting at the beginning of this month, we found that we saw templates that were changing. So, as Amy mentioned, we utilized the East Hampton model and pasted and cut our information in there as it was related to Volentown Elementary School. And that's the document that you have now. And it is incredible what's happening. Just a half hour before this meeting started, I got seven pages from the state. And the theme is, "The Connecticut State Department will provide additional guidance on a variety of approaches." This is where we are right now. So, the document that we'll post is as of this meeting. And what's going to happen is tomorrow morning, we submit that to the state. And I will tell you, they have people who will review things. And they may turn around and they may say, no, you need to do this. You need to do that. But we have resources of people. And I know Patrick McCormas, the Director of the Yonkers Health District, has read through the plan that you have right now. And he said, "This is really good. You've covered all of the bases, but there are going to be little details about the day-to-day things that happen with children in school." And that's why I wanted Amy to start it off, to go through all of the details. So, what happens is, this is on, this is on scheduled item number four as far as reviewing the plan. And we're going to talk about what happens with communications and other things, you know, when we get to that. But Amy has a network with principals. I have met constantly with superintendents. One meeting was 252 people talking about their plans and what's happening. So, there's a lot of sharing of information and updating. But we are still getting updates from the state, as I mentioned before. Tomorrow, the plan will be posted on the website. We're going back and we're posting the minutes of the four reopened committees that have already met. And as you know, we have a range of people, 16 people, on the committee who have, you know, worked very hard to review different areas. One of the things that there was a question about was ventilation. And I have to tell the citizens that, you know, we have a 0% budget. But we've been handling adjustments for COVID-19 within that budget. But we may have some additional expenditures that may develop from that. And as we're making expenditures from our budget that are a little different than the things that we thought that we would do because we have to buy personal protective equipment and making some adjustments, we're keeping a list of that. And within the FEMA request, you know, we've already submitted any information for, you know, requesting reimbursement. Now, the school district doesn't get that money back. If, if we get any percentage return, I think it was a list of, you know, over $50,000. If we get a percentage return, that goes into the town treasury. And that's the way that our expenditure budget works. Just 24 hours ago, I received the note that the CARES Act, the ESER funds that were approved by the, by the Senate and the House of Representatives in March, the funds are now available. It's taken a while because there were some questions about giving funds to private corporations. But we do have a little bit of funding from there. So, we're looking at how we can now use those funds. And as we go through the, the summer, we will take a look and we will make sure that things are safe for children. One of the big things was, working with the board, we, we completed staffing and we kept two sections for fourth grade, which is critical because that means that we can have the appropriate space. And we have a declining, well, we have a little bit of a stable enrollment. It's declining just a little bit. But we were able to go through the classrooms and, and develop appropriate social distancing spaces. And as the children coming in, they're going to see classrooms that might be a little different than, than where they were before. I spent a lot of time with Brian Calio, our Director of Maintenance, because last summer, we did extensive air conditioning in the building. And there's only four areas in the building that are not air conditioned. And hopefully, at some point in time, we'll be able to put that in. But the other thing that we were checking, and we've had our service companies coming in, making sure the ventilation system is working appropriately. And we've developed strategies for changing filters a little more frequently. This is an expense. Plus, we've added extra custodians for the summer. And as I walked through the building the other day, it was just so clean. It was incredible. But we're continuing with that because we do want things to be as clean as possible. And one of the things that we'll look at is extra cleaning for the building, especially if, you know, there's classrooms that might be, need a little bit more attention during the day. So, if we have to, at the next regular meeting of the board, I might have a list of people that we would need to help with cleaning. One of the things that's important, and I need to talk to you about transportation. We run our own transportation company. And we have our own buses. And this gives us some flexibility. But the issue here is the, the directive from the state is saying that we can have buses, you know, and have the kids ride on the buses. But we're still looking at ways that we can distance students. We're also looking to possibly temporarily have monitors on the bus, at least for the K through eighth grade students, to help with, you know, seating arrangements and, and other activities. And we will have more information about that as we move along. The high schools, the seven designated high schools that we have, everybody's working on their plan. And I suspect that tomorrow and the next day, I'll be receiving some of the information regarding the high school, whether they're going to open up in full or start off with a hybrid model. We have to look and see what's happening. But our buses go from as far north as Killingley to Groton. And we have, our children have those choices of seven different high schools. So, that will be a component that I hope to have more information at the July regular meeting. And then, I'm also going to request the board have another special meeting a month from now so that you can receive an additional upgrade with what's happening. I think I'll stop here because I have some other things that are future in the agenda. I don't know if any board members have any questions for me. I also wanted to mention, we've worked very diligently this summer. And Lloyd Johnson, Dr. Lloyd Johnson is here. And perhaps, Lloyd, you'd like to say a few things about special education?
The Bureau of Special Education has been very responsive to the questions that the different directors have asked. There have been guidelines put together regarding certain aspects of, of the programming that we're responsible for. There are other topics that they're planning on sending more information on. They've been in communication and counseling between the Special Education Department and the Early Childhood Department so that those two branches of our government are, are working in harmony. It's just, as everyone has alluded, it's, it's, it's a moving target. And we've made the same decision that many of my director colleagues have made, not to have in-person special education or 504 meetings this year at the start. Parents will be asked to participate remotely. We will have technology in my office so that those that are in, in the school that choose to come to the office for a child's annual review can be in that room. But a monitor will show all the participants, whether they are participating from a classroom in a, in a different part of the building or the parents participating from work or home so that we can limit and, and maintain social, limit physical contact and maintain social distances. So, last spring, we were, we had to get very creative. But we also learned a lot about how to use technology to help. For those families that do have children with, with individual educational plans, we're going to do the best we can for those triennials, those reevaluation assessments that couldn't be completed because of the school shutdown, to have those meetings as, as early in the fall as possible. We did have all the regular annual reviews completed before the end of school. So, we're, we're pleased that we were able to do that sort of catch-up work. So... And the staff has been working this summer, providing services to our kids through the summer program and are actively working on planning how they're going to reach out to the youngsters for whom they're responsible during the school day. So, we will keep you informed of any updated guidelines that may, may come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Well, special services also continue the, what they are at this point. If a parent chooses to send their student back to school.
Megan, it came through a little fuzzy.
It was breaking up. Your message was breaking up.
Sorry. Sorry. Can you hear me now? I think I knew what she was trying to ask. If a parent chooses the remote learning track and their child receives special education services, whether it's speech and language, resource services, et cetera, will they get those in the remote learning track? So, right now, we would be working to schedule. How can we schedule in-person and having someone accessible to those people at home? Some schedule a little flexible than others. If a child receives special education services as in academic services, it may be a different teacher. But getting that service from someone in the Special Education Department, we would try to, you know, work our best to be able to do that. Same for like speech services. You know, we would look to, how could we manipulate our schedule and put those kids in to be able to, if they're at home learning, can doing that, trying to make that blend together? What I envision is that we set up a schedule with all of our students, for example. And whether that student's in or out, that's their time. And then, that would be their time, whether they're in, they would get their service. Or whether they're out, they would get their service at that particular time. So, it might not be as flexible as it was in the fall, but still offering, you know, and hoping to provide those services for kids who are on remote tracks, being able to do that. OTPT is a little different. And Lloyd probably would speak to that a little bit differently. They're subcontracted with us. So, OTPT are subcontracted. So, it's different that way. So, we would just have to work out how, what that would look like if kids were on remote learning track and at home.
A lot of it will
Anybody else?
Be dependent upon what parents choose to do. Once we know which parents are going to be, whose children are going to be in school and which parents choose for those students to stay home at the beginning, then we can more accurately put a plan together, whether it's for a student with an IEP or a regular education student.
Right. Exactly.
That data is very important. And I like how Amy chose her words as she explained the different options, not trying to prejudice parents one way or the other. It is a choice that they have. And we're dedicated to meeting the challenge of reaching out to all the kids that live in Volentown. And we're dedicated to meeting the challenge of, of reaching out to all the kids that live in Volentown.
Thank you, Lloyd. That's great. And yes, a very difficult choice for everyone during this time. So Adam, you're on mute.
Are there any other questions that people might have with the plan? Now, I've been, I've been reviewing other boards of education. Some people said, oh, their board of education approved it. And I, I would prefer to have a motion that authorizes the superintendent to submit the plan to the State Department of Education for review. Because I have a feeling that they're going to be reviewing plans and then sending them back with suggestions. But the other thing is that I just received a seven-page memo about things to consider. And we haven't even reviewed that in the committee. But I will tell you that the board will receive an updated plan at the regular meeting and then another updated plan at the special meeting if they so choose to schedule one at the end of August. So the motion is to authorize me to submit the plan to the State Department of Education. Those are the words that I would use. I can't make the motion, but that's what I would suggest.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to submit the plan to the, to the state for approval.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Well, thank you, everyone, for, obviously, it's, I agree, I think much a fluid document, but we'll skip through the step of sending it to the state and, and getting feedback. And most importantly, just, you know, as we will, an agenda item number four, we'll probably, you know, finalize with some of that detail, but what the timelines will look like and where information will be available to public and when we'll keep these documents updated and shareable for everyone.
Yes, and Kate, I, I, I'm going to enter the names of the committee members and their titles into the minutes so people can, so we can document, these are the people that contributed. And of course, Kate has represented the Board of Education. And I will say that there's been extensive meetings. And there is another meeting that we will have on Tuesday. We've, we have a meeting on Tuesdays to review in detail the many changes that occur on a weekly basis. So, and thank you to those committee members.
Absolutely. It's, it's astounding to be part of that. And I feel, you know, grateful to be part of it, but to watch the amount of work and amount of drafting and redrafting and editing that has gone on in just, you know, the mere, you know, three to four weeks that we've had a template working. It's, it's just, it's a tremendous amount of work, so I appreciate everyone's commitment to it.
The other thing is important, as you read the plan, you will see that we have addressed many of the topics. And I look at other plans and I look at their teams. And in some cases, there's 15 full-time administrators that are working on their plan. And in our school district, we have 1.8 administrators. Amy's full-time, Lloyd and I are two days a week. And we've been going through that. But I can't thank enough for the work that Lloyd's done and also Amy for their work. And Tracy has served on the, on the committee and, and kept abreast of situations. And it, I think that Volentown is unique because we are a small community, but we really work very hard to make sure that we're in compliance with all regulations and that our children are safe and that their academic performance is very, very fine.
Yes, are we prepared to move on to the calendar adjustments?
Yes, the state passed a law that said, you know, you can reduce the school year by three days. That meant 177 days. But our contract and our school calendar offers children 184 days. And we're bringing the teachers back. And so the first, the week of August 24th, and, and August 24th and 25th, the teachers will come back. And then the 26th, 27th, and 28th, all faculty will be back. And we have professional development activities as well as paying attention to all of the details that are brought up as far as helping students, you know, move through the school day. So the first day of school in this calendar is now August 31st. And the week of August 31st, we'll have an early dismissal on Friday, September 4th, the Friday before Labor Day, because we wanted time for the faculty and staff to get together to recap the week and to review what adjustments had to be done. So the students go back home and they have the, the three-day, three full days on the weekend and return on September 8th for four days of school. So that means that the first real full week every day of school will be September 14th. And our last day of school is right now projected for June 10th. So this gives, this gives the students 181 days. And we're only, we're required to send, you know, to have 180 days. So our children are going one more day. And the extra days that, that we have, the teachers still work, you know, their schedule beyond the students and the paraprofessionals also work. But it would be helpful if the Board of Ed approved the calendar that we sent to you, unless you have some suggestions or other recommendations. And I am in hopes that we can open up and have the children return. And I'm in hopes that we do not have our, our year interrupted. But if we do, we are prepared to make adjustments and to continue the educational program.
I, I just have one, one thought and we can certainly discuss this about, when the kids return to school, we immediately go to a, I believe it's, is it a half-day on Monday, correct?
No, the, the first day would be a full day. Oh, no, September, excuse me.
First, correct?
Yeah, September 31st, yes.
August 31st.
Yeah.
Yeah, August 31st, excuse me, yeah.
Three days after we go right to full day, should we be considering at some, that first week of school leading up to full day, should we have a, one more, two more half-days so kids get used to wearing masks and the schedule? I don't know how that puts teachers out or what that does, but I just wanted to.
August 31st is a, is an early dismissal. And also September 4th is an early dismissal. So they have three full days.
Yeah.
But it's, it's really up to the board if they, they want to. We just have to count hours to make sure that we get 900 hours in.
Well, yeah.
Do you say?
I think it looks good the way it is. The prob, I think it looks good the way it is because we really don't know what you're going to be doing in January and February this year. We may all be out again.
Or sooner.
Yeah, I'm surprised to see, to see even opening on a Monday. Because I know you guys generally, it seems like you came from like that Wednesday, that the kids kind of worked their way back in, but I mean.
Amy, did you hear that?
Um, I think I heard a little bit of what Megan was saying.
I know, Megan, I just mumble it, it's hard to hear.
And we usually, I was like, you're, you're later, I know. Um, are you saying because we typically? Megan, were you asking if we come back, because we normally come back on Wednesdays typically?
Right, I, I was surprised to see that we weren't starting a little bit later in the week. But I mean, I'm also okay with deferring if, if this is what you guys need. But I can't, like, I said, just throwing it out there to discuss. And hopefully you guys can hear this. I'm not sure what's going on my wifi.
I know, in terms of getting warm, warmed up to this, to this new, new norm, I, I didn't know if a potential discussion could be had about having additional half-days for that week or if this is, I mean, I really, so teachers and students can work their way towards full days. But again, I know that you've worked hard on this calendar, so you really put a lot of thought in it. So I, you know, I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Can you, Megan, explain about? Sorry, Megan, I mentioned starting earlier, our, on a Monday start. That is, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam and Amy, it's kind of a regional start date for most of our, you know, a lot of our other schools. There's kind of all on that day, so it was in concert with other schools we might be sending to.
Other schools are starting later.
You're muted, Adam.
Yeah. I know Northrop schools aren't starting until the ninth now.
I saw that, yeah, some are starting. I think when we originally did start this, Kate is right, that most were like looking at August 31st. Some are a little bit later. I think it is going to be a transition for them coming back. And we have to look at, one of the considerations we have to make also is what is high school transportation going to look like? And what is our early dismissal really going to be? Is it going to be 1:00 PM? Or is it going to be different because high school might be different? So there is a little bit of a change that might have to occur than what we're, we're normally used to.
And I just, I just want to, you know, put in a, a note for working parents that are probably very anxious about the calendar and when they need to start their affairs and figure out all their childcare, because that's what so many people are anxious about, what they're, how they're going to manage this all. So I do just want to, all to kind of get something.
And I would, yeah, I would agree with Kate. I think that it, it is, it is hard for those who are, you know, transitioning their kids back and forth somewhere to come to a different time as well. I, I don't know. I don't know what the best solution is for the, you know.
Adam, you're on mute.
If the board approves the calendar based on current information and then over the course of the next two weeks, we get a change, then we would have to come in and recognize that. One of the things that I liked about this calendar was that it had June 10th as a projected, you know, ending date because there had been some times when we've had five, even 12, snow days and had to cancel school. So I was just looking at making sure that we had leeway. But I, I think it's, it's going to be a tough call this year because we have to give parents the best information that we have at this time. And we were going to have the children come back on August, August 26th. But then we looked at the list of things to do in the plan and we needed to really look at staff assignments, look at the schedule and have time to prepare and talk about all of the various incidents. Because we're going to get a lot of what if this happens, what if that happens, what are we going to do? And the five days of professional development are necessary. And then the half-day, the early dismissal on Monday, the 31st, would give a chance for the staff to recap. Children come back in for three full days, come in for Friday, early dismissal, and then the staff looks at it again. Erica, you're shaking your head. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
We can't hear you.
You just muted yourself.
Oh, I was singing, you missed it. No, you know, I, I think, you know, from just hearing others' concerns, you know, throughout this time that we're, we're thinking about these different scenarios and being involved in a school myself, you know, thinking about transition and getting used to masks. That's why I put the half-day idea or suggestion out there because of just making this transition work, not overwhelming kids, not overwhelming teachers and staff. That's why I was bringing that up, so. But if you feel that Monday half-day and Friday half-day are, is something that's enough, you think?
Amy? Amy, what's your, you're, you're doing the schedule with, with the staff.
Right. Because I know that.
Amy, did you hear me? Wow. Kate, did you hear me?
I heard you.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I know some schools, for example, and I hate to bring up other schools because we're so very different, all the schools, but they have like one day where there's their, their learning, they're at home, you know, doing virtual learning, which gives them the break from the masks and, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So we want to go full in and I'm in support of that. I just didn't know about the beginning transition, if you should take a look at that a little more carefully. That's, that's my thought.
Amy, I think it was just, Adam was just wondering if you had any thoughts about doing half-days. I know we are reluctant sometimes to have half-days even for conferences and such because it is, it is hard on parents, working parents, to, to really be flexible in that way. This is unprecedented, so I don't want to, I absolutely appreciate your comment, Arca, because it is, it's going to be a hard transition. And I mean, just having a, just having a kindergartner and how hard that first week is and how exhausted they are and it's so overwhelming, especially the little learners. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot, laws and rules and regulations that they have to smack in their, you know, like get all and smooshed in their head, motion. So I, I want to, I want to kind of open it to that, but I do, if it's going to be too hard to.
I would agree. I always try to think of my own, you know, how that would affect myself and my own family if I had, you know, would I have to pick them up and would, who, who would go and get them and that type of thing, but I.
I think most parents hate half-days.
Absolutely.
So, so are you saying?
It, it's, it's, you know, but again, we have 200-plus kids coming to school. We have to work out the kinks. I think we have to have some valuable time to work out all these kinks. And I don't know, having three full days right away, I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm okay if we, if, you know, I, I do feel that it's going to be hard for them. And I'm okay and supportive if we do have, I mean, early dismissal, I would say half-day, but it's not truly a half-day, but an early dismissal. You know, and parents just knowing that now so that we can, you know, work that out. It might be easier, especially for all of our kids. And I, we always talk about younger kids, but for big kids too, it's going to be hard to come back to something that's very different than what's.
So would you make, would you, Erica, would you make the whole week half-days, early dismissals?
Um, possibly, yes. I, I, I think possibly. I, I know, but I, I want to also recognize the concern on work. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I also want to. Okay, um, I also wanna recognize the concern, I know I'm parents' end, but this is not for forever, it's not for, it's just for, just the beginning. What we're doing, I don't know, I, I, you know, but again. You know, I'd like to hear, you know, Amy Saffalatos, you know, it's, her input is very critical and important here about, about how, how we wanna set up the climate coming in, is, is full day is going to be too overwhelming? We've got a lot of high anxiety coming in to this situation. Lot of questions, a lot of unknowns, I don't know, are we, are we putting full days, is that going to be overwhelming at first? Is it gonna throw people off? I don't know, I, I thought that.
One of the things that we usually have, you know, we usually have three, three days when we open schools, and four days, then a full week. But one of the things that we think, we thought of is, we were gonna go five days on the week of August thirty-first. Then we added a P D day on that Friday, early dismissal, and then we were talking, perhaps the children needed a, you know, half, an early dismissal coming in, and then the full day would allow us to look at, you know, some of the things with the schedule, and I know Amy mentioned something very important, we wanted to have break times for children. So, you know, the schedule may be a little bit different, because we have social distancing and cohorts of students, but we don't want them staying in the same space all day long, so there's a schedule worked out for getting outside and having some different opportunities, so that it, there's going to be a, a lot of emphasis on helping students return to school after being out for such a long time.
Um, what if, you know, in those, in those days, and my staff will be, you know, very supportive of what we put forward, but if we did reduce those days to early dismissals, really the focus should on, on getting kids in, re-acclimating them, we haven't seen them in seven months. You know, we haven't, we haven't seen a lot of them in a long time, and just, we're gonna have to go through a lot of, it won't per se be those academic pieces that we wanna jump back in and do. It's going to be hand washing, sanitizing, here's our new space, here's our new hallway, here's what it looks like. It will also be, for a piece of that, getting them into Google Classroom or on T-Saw, because we need to hit the ground running, being able to get the, into those pieces, but maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's more so what we should focus on if we did, if we did do early dismissals during that time.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, I called in by phone. I called in by phone. But it, so maybe my question, I know we talked about this last meeting, I believe. You were waiting on guidance from the state regarding attendance and tardies and things of that nature. Have you gotten that guidance? Because maybe that could come, no. Because I was gonna say, maybe.
We're still waiting, we're still waiting.
Of course, because maybe if parents have concerns.
Three hours ago, from the state, tracking in attendance for state reporting, the State Department will provide additional guidance on a variety of issues, so they sent something out, and they're going over reporting systems and, and what's happening, and it looked like they wanted some time to review that, so they're gonna get back to us on, on that issue.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if maybe to address Arca's concern, maybe those first couple of days, we can give the parents some flexibility as to, you know, if you feel like this is something, you know, your student isn't prepared to come full days, you know, please feel free to use early dismissal. Um, you know, is that something that we can kind of provide some guidance on for people that have those concerns for their parents, if, for their students, if we decided to keep the calendar as is? Do you think that's something that would
I think.
Um, address their concerns, Arca?
That, that might be a little difficult, because the high school bus runs have to leave at a certain time. With the preschool, we did that midday, and they had a route for that. But if we were going to have, provide transportation for a full day, but if you opted for an early dismissal, I think that would be a little, a little bit challenging as far as setting up transportation.
Yeah, I'm talking just allowing people to pick their students up.
That, that, people.
Yeah, but just kind of.
Option.
Right, but I mean, if we put it out that it's, you know, we understand that this is a concern, and this is something that, you know, as a parent, you can consider. You know, Arca, do you feel like that addresses some, you know, for the people that have those concerns? Or do you think we have to have, you know, the calendar reflecting, reflected of that?
I, I prob, I probably would want it reflected in the calendar, so
Okay.
Parents can, you know, plan and make plans, and families can make plans, and teachers can, can also plan what they wanna do for that day, because then if they leave, half their classroom leaves, then they have, they, they miss out on some instruction if they decide to go home half-day. I mean.
Right.
Is, is, is having full, well, let's talk about this, let's look at it for the opposite. We want full days that first week, because I think, Amy, you were saying there's a lot of things to cover, is that what you're saying, that maybe there's much to cover?
No, I was saying, if, if we did early dis, if we did early dismissals, we could just cover those types of things in, in an early dismissal day, like we would just, maybe we need to ease, ease back in. Not just for students, but for staff also, who's, who are going to have a hard.
Can you call in too, Amy?
I keep losing connection.
Amy, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I don't know, I keep losing connection. Um, I'm just thinking, maybe, um, maybe it's better to do early dismissals, and just be able to do those things that are, those simple things. Not squeezing anything in, just doing those simple things, teaching them what is expected of them now. That first week, if we came back.
Right. I'm also thinking that in terms of like, you know, transition for the teachers, I think we're gonna have a lot of anomalies that come up, that we, we, we can like, so many scenarios that we can come up with, and millions of scenarios that happen, and I think if we have a little bit of time to address some of those initial scenarios that we, all of us can't even think of at this point, that for, just that first week, so teachers have time to think and plan, and, and, and talk to each other, and consult, and consult with you, and I don't know, I felt that would be, you know, good consideration.
What are you gonna do with the high school kids?
Well.
If we have all these half-days, how are we transporting the high school kids?
Kathy, the bus schedule is set up, so that if we have a one o'clock early dismissal, generally speaking, we can make the high school runs. But if you were gonna make those early dismissal dates, I would have to make it dependent upon a review of high school transportation, just to check. But I have not received the plans for high school yet, except for some conversations with people that say they might have a hybrid plan for high schools, coming in some days with some students, and other days having distance learning. I mean, my, my, my granddaughter in, in Philadelphia is a senior in high school, and she's gonna do the first semester distance learning. And my daughter teaches in Philadelphia middle school, and they've already made the decision to start with distance learning, so they're in a different situation than we are.
Do we have another meeting scheduled between now and our typical meeting time?
It's, I think it's August, what is it, thirteenth, I believe, yeah.
October thirteenth.
Yeah.
Adam?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when we might know what the high school's plans are?
They, tomorrow, everybody has to release them, so we're gonna be seeing some plans. And I would anticipate that high schools will send information, you know, even last night, I mean, it's July, and the N F A Board just voted to approve the next five-year contract. And generally speaking, we get that in, you know, April or, or March, but it was somewhat delayed this year, as they reviewed some of, of the issues with contracts. But hopefully tomorrow, Lloyd, hopefully Friday, Lloyd.
As I, I guess my thought is, if we focus this calendar on the elementary, middle school program, and then, and then later in August, when we know what all the high schools are doing, there may need to be some adjustment because of the impact of the high schools when they're starting full-time, or, and the impact on busing. Just a thought that I had.
Can we, can we wait till then? Is that acceptable to wait?
You, you, you know, you're, you're, you're representing the parents, if they can wait until August thirteenth of the calendar. But I know people wanna make daycare arrangements and other things.
I, I personally think they, they need to know that the kids are not gonna be in school the week of the twenty-fourth of August.
Yes.
That the start of school, it sounds like there's consensus that schools should start for kids on the thirty-first.
I, I really feel strongly about that, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely, we just, we need something out there.
Parents are ready for the kids to come back. I mean, you could, you could always, you know, you could always approve the calendar as presented, and say, if needed, you know, the first week in September, might have, there's two early dismissals, there may have to be additional days, and you could make that decision at the next month, so that parents, but they at least know their children would be going to school. Because nobody has said, don't send them to school the week of August thirtieth, it's just those middle three days. Are the early dismissals a full days?
Do we, Amy, do we think that the parent forum that we're going to hold in this upcoming week will give us more guidance on that? Or is that an area where we can ask questions? The, I know there's probably a lot of questions coming out of this board meeting in general, and I think there's been some comments just via the YouTube feed. So we, we wanna make sure that we're addressing all of those Q and A kind of type questions. If, if this half-day idea in the, you know, the first week of school, starting the thirty-first, is palatable. I'm happy to have that be our next, our next meetings in two weeks, so I'm happy to, to, you know, move ahead with what is presented, with the idea that this, that the half-days are consideration based on the fluidity of the conversations we're having with parents, the community.
We would just put that right on the bottom of the calendar, and note those days differently, and say, these days may need to be moved to early dismissals. But I have to recount the number of hours, but I think that we're okay, because the State Board of Education has accepted a hundred and seventy-seven days, and we're going a hundred and eighty-one days. And our hours have usually been okay for the last many years.
Megan, Kathy, are you okay with that? Evan?
Yeah, I mean, whatever works best, probably for getting them back into school.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll ask for a motion to approve the calendar as presented with the understanding that we're looking into those, starting on, with the school calendar, starting on August thirty-first, Monday, as a half-day. With, and a professional development day on that Friday, the fourth, with the first, second, and third, in consideration of being half-days.
Early dismissals.
Early dismissal, yes, dismissals. Should we feel that's appropriate for the unique start of this school season?
Just so I understand, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll formally vote on the early dismissal days at our August thirteenth meeting?
You, you have the opportunity to make adjustments in the calendar at, at basically any time, based on a need, so, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. The Board of Ed sets the calendar, yeah. As long as it complies with number of hours per year and days per year set by the state.
Okay, and you're gonna check into the transportation if we.
We're gonna check in transportation, or else we're gonna check in surrounding school districts. And I may be able to come back with samples of calendars at the August regular meeting.
Okay, then I'll make that motion to, as Kate expressed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have one? I didn't hear.
Second.
Oh, Kathy, thank you. Got it, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be getting, again, lots of feedback when we have our parent discussions as well in the forum. I hope we do. The item number four is the financial survey for projected COVID-nineteen expenses sent to the S T E.
Yes, and also, there was a survey that, you know, we had submitted to the state. And, you know, the survey was required to be in by Friday, July seventeenth. And there were just a couple of questions that we were required to answer, and we did some initial surveys, but example, the first one is, you know, percentage of students and staff in your district and programs you do not expect will attend school, and that you do expect will attend, and students, in the initial survey we did, was eighty-four percent. The certified staff was ninety-seven percent, and the non-cert was a hundred percent. And then transportation. Percent of students that really required transportation was twenty-eight percent, because we had parents say, if needed, they would provide transportation. And then the other thing is that I mentioned, we have seven designated high schools, and need to review their varying schedules. We transport students from eastern, the eastern Connecticut shoreline, all the way to northeastern Connecticut. And then as far as do you anticipate any challenges in your building with maintaining adequate social distancing? And I wrote, we have a sixty-six thousand square foot school for our preschool through eighth-grade students. We have a small building, the, the size of two portable classrooms on the property for our central office. High school students are transported, but based on a class size, we can anticipate maintaining social distancing. And then how is the district reopen plan impacted by the outplacement of students to private facilities? We will need to review the, the plans of outplacement facilities and the needs of our students, but right now, based on what we've set up and the P P Ts that Lloyd has had, we're okay with our transportation as developed. And then it asks for, you know, what would happen with budget? If they're, they're trying to quantify expenditures, so I gave you a spreadsheet. And this is, we have our budget, but what is the potential for additional costs? And I will tell you, I'm not going to underfund this request. I gave, I gave a wish list, because I don't want to have something happen. And what if we have to increase staff for, you know, virtual learning support? So I put down thirty-seven thousand dollars. Certified substitute teachers, I added in addition to the budget sixteen thousand, non-certified subs, six thousand. Backup nurse support, what if the nurse needs help? Ten thousand. What if the nurse needs help? 10,000 extra part-time custodians. I put in 42,000 social worker extra time beyond the school day. Extra supervision at arrival and dismissal. And then I put down bus monitors. We're reviewing that and posting it. If students are coming on the bus, we want to maintain proper behavior, proper social distancing. So this is not a permanent type of thing, but during the pandemic, we want children to feel safe on the bus and we want things to go okay. And then I put down a backup bus driver. If we have somebody that's out or gets sick, bus drivers are, extra bus drivers are just not available. I put down also for an extra, a backup van driver. And then overtime for buses, what if we have to do double runs? To, you know, to get our elementary school students into the school. You know, we, we feel that we can properly space children, but the governor's, uh, you know, plan is that, you know, students can ride buses. But if we needed to, could we do a, a double run? And then for equipment, uh, desk screens, um, online program enhancements. PPE for students and staff, uh, that was the largest item. Ventilation enhancements, uh, we, we would maintain and we're going to change the filters a little bit more. And then, uh, I put down air conditioning for the final four areas. Uh, Plexiglas cleaning supplies would really be up. Uh, create additional space and then carts for food movement. I might have underfunded that, Amy, now that you're, we're going to serve in the, uh, in the class. And then disposable supplies, uh, might be increased for meals. And then PPE for bus drivers, cleaning supplies for the bus drivers. I put down, we have an older van that we were reviewing to replace. Not this year, but next year. But if, if we need additional transportation, we may need to, um, take that older van offline and buy a larger van, uh, for, for distancing. And there could be some increases in bus fuel. So this whole list came to $565,700. And this is what I submitted to the state for them to review because they may be sending school districts extra money to help with all of the additional expenditures. Um, what if we don't get this money? Then we're going to try as much as possible to, uh, look within our existing budget. And, uh, the Board of Education in the budget process for this year took, allowed me to, uh, complete some strategies so that we paid for some things out of last year's budget. Came out with a 0% budget and if we have to make adjustments and, uh, be, uh, very frugal, uh, with some, uh, expenditures or, or not, uh, uh, complete some projects, um, then, um, we, we would use those funds. But this is a wish list. It's, um, it's not a wish list. It's, it's more of, what if we had to really, uh, add some additional things to make uh, the full return to school, uh, you know, totally possible? And I'm not going to pass up the opportunity to put something into the state because quite frankly, over the last years, uh, 15 years ago, if you put a grant in for $98,000, you generally got 98,000. But during this time over the last six or seven years, you, you might get $9,000 or you might get nothing. And so this is the nature of what's happening, but they need to know that the towns need some economic support. And Tracy is smiling because, uh, she, I've never had to go back to the town for extra money. But, um, depending upon what happens this year, we may have some challenges, okay? Any questions? And I have to tell the board that they've been extremely competent and, and very precise in developing budgets because as I, I mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, over the last four, over four budget cycles, uh, the, if you take all of the increases and decreases, the average has been minus about $3,000 a year. And, uh, that's quite an accomplishment in maintaining our programs and, uh, and working out things for children. So I appreciate the, uh, support that the board has given me with, uh, managing the funds. Managing every penny.
Man, what you do, Adam, thank you. I, I, I appreciate seeing, um, the PPE investments, the, you know, the, the cleaning supply, the larger numbers and, and virtual learning support. I think that's, you know, obviously a high-ticket item and could be very much our future. And, um, you know, supporting that online virtual learning. Um, and the, the wifi and the Chromebooks with touchscreens. I know I've mentioned this in some of the committee meetings, but, um, you know, offering technology to the students is, is so important, um, in, in this day and age, especially during this, um, pandemic crisis. And, and just, you know, the young learners that have to do seesaw and dealing with touchscreens. And as a personal parent perspective, it's, it's really, um, credit to, to try to promote that type of, um, access to technology as best as we can. Those are my only comments. Anyone else? Okay, so, um, for item number four, uh, the schedule of communications to the public, including virtual and/or phone participation.
Yes. As, as I, as I mentioned, uh, you know, this plan that we're submitting to the state will be posted on our website. Uh, we're establishing a new link on the website that will say reopen. And there's going to be of the, uh, minutes to the reopen committees. There's going to be the plan that's posted. And there's going to be other materials related to this, but over the next month, there's going to be a series of communications to the parents and the citizens about what is happening. And, um, just to, uh, mention something, Amy is, uh, holding a, a meeting, uh, tomorrow. Uh, if for interested faculty members to review that. And, uh, Amy, you have a number of things that are happening. Oh, and we do plan to have a reopen committee meetings with the 16 people, uh, over the next, uh, you know, Tuesdays, uh, for as long as we need to. And, uh, we will plan an appropriate way to update the plan as of that date. Amy, you, you had a couple of things with communications that you're doing.
Yep, and so as I had said before, I will continue to communicate weekly. Um, I will post everything and put it on our website. So I would ask that anybody, um, who wants to go through the plan, please comment through our Google form. And I will be able to then respond and send out, um, video regarding the questions that come through. And so that way then I can answer them for our parents and families.
Lloyd, do you have something to add for the special ed department?
Oh, I think, uh, we, we're, uh, we're working on, uh, planning how to, uh, provide our services to the kids and responding to, uh, suggestions and directives from the, uh, the Bureau of Special Education. So, uh, I think having that, uh, at least those five days before the kids come in is going to be very, very helpful for us. Uh, I think once we have the choices back from the parents and separate out the, uh, the families of students with IEPs, then we'll be able to know what our caseloads are going to look like, which students are going to be in the building and which students are going to be home. And hopefully we'll have all that data before the staff gets back, uh, that last week of August. Uh, I think we should, uh, once we have the data assembled with the names, get that out to parent. My staff as soon as possible. So we know what the challenge is for us, uh, as far as that planning process, uh, before school starts for the kids.
Uh, just to clarify, um, for, from Amy, because it was a little mumbled to hear it. Um, so the information, both the plan and then the kind of ongoing document that you'll be updating will be posted to our Volantown V S website. Um,
That will be coming out of my office, Kate.
Okay.
And as we, um, as we do updates, they're going to be saved for the Tuesday meetings. So that, uh, if, if the committee is meeting and we get something in the state, we'll continue with our current process of, of doing those updates at that point. And those will be posted, you know, on the website and we'll figure out a way to, um, look at the changes that, that took place, okay?
But for the informal questions that will come from parents, obviously they're probably our interest, how, what is their process? Go to the student, they go to the Volantown website. There will be a specific form that they can submit questions. They'll email it and then you will s- send the form back to those parents. Okay, and is that live now or as of when?
Well, our emails are posted on the website. They could, uh, anybody could write a note to Amy or Lloyd or myself using the website, you know, email address. And, uh, we certainly would, uh, you know, channel that in, uh, but Amy is going to keep the response record. So if I get a question, I will certainly either answer it or, or, you know, process that uh, to Amy for her update. And Amy, your, your, um, your website for the responses, you were going to collect questions and then you were going to post answers on the website.
I think that's a good idea, posting the answers on the website because other people may have the same question.
Amy, did you hear us?
She's gonna call in, Adam.
Oh, she's gonna call in. Technology.
Enter your participant ID, followed by town, otherwise.
Yeah, I, I think.
Well, that, that is, that is basically the process, but she will be sending out, uh, you know, uh, she's been wonderful about sending out school messages and updates and newsletters. And so she will send that out to the community, you know, again, probably tomorrow, okay? She's nodding her head, so.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that what the, you know, what their next step is and how they can, um, have outreach, especially since this is a, a YouTube video where they don't get live feedback. You know, it's a board meeting, so we take comments, but we, we have to get back to them as they.
Yes.
Um, as we receive them a- after the meeting, so. Okay. Um, there's no other, uh, agenda items?
I would ask the board to schedule a special meeting for Thursday, August 27th. Because I do think that we're going to need that. We'll have a regular meeting and, uh, I know that, uh, you know, there'll be things that are coming up and, and certainly, uh, we may need some last minute, uh, uh, review by the board and guidance on, on where we're going. It's, uh, a very unusual time. We've had very few, very few special meetings and, uh, this is a time where it's very special. It requires special meetings.
Does that require a motion to add the meeting or? Adam? You deem a motion for that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. It's gonna, it's gonna be posted. Oh, yes.
Okay, I just, I, I know that we can have them, they're part, we basically have them at our will to do two meetings a month, but it's just, okay.
Yes.
Make a motion to have, um, an August 27th meeting, um, special board meeting.
And the topic is reopen plan.
With the topic of reopen plan.
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Megan, second. Thank you, thank you both. Um, on favor? Any opposed? Motion carries to hold the second, um, the August 27th special board meeting to discuss the reopen plan.
And, uh, a final comment, uh, I will be in touch with Tracy, but we want to look at, uh, a way that we might be able to upgrade our Zoom access. And, uh, I, I really do want to review this, uh, audio access because, um, it, at times it's been difficult. People have had wonderful statements. I don't want to get, have them get lost because of technical difficulties, okay?
Yeah, I can correct. I feel terrible. It's been such a hard meeting to run. Um, I've had a, a, a virtual meeting fail in their lifetime, but it's, I know this one is an important one for the community. And we're all struggling here. So thank you for everyone that is staying on and, um, and listening. Be here for, um, for you as we go along here. So make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh, second.
Okay. The meeting will adjourn at, what's my time? 10:09.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, good night. Thank you all.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Yes, thank you, DeeDee.